Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We have a full house. We're still bringing chairs in. We started our meeting today at four o'clock. We have had the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, court order, and the approval of agenda, and we have been in executive session. So we're at the point now where I need a motion to return to the regular meeting from executive session. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion we return to regular session from executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now back in public session. Next is public comments. Ms. Cindy, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We go on to public presentations, and first we have the introduction of Patrol Officer Brian O'Donnell. Lieutenant Creel, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. We decided to introduce today two new officers to the Hardyville Police Department. They will be serving as a patrol officer here. They're the two Bryans. To my left, we have Brian O'Donnell, to your right, Brian O'Donnell. He's originally from Massachusetts. He joined the Marine Corps in 2008 and completed a seven-year enlistment. He's obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and he also started his law enforcement career while he was in the Marine Corps as a military police officer. He moved on to a federal DOD officer, the Buford Air Station, and he comes with us. He served there for 12 years before coming to us in June of this year. To my right, your left, is Brian Bordette. He's originally from Chicago, Illinois, joined the Marine Corps as well, served a four-year enlistment. He's got an associate's degree in criminal justice, and he actually started his law enforcement career with the Oral Police Department. So he also joined our department in June of this year as well. So they're both in the field training stage right now on patrol. They're doing a great job. I don't see any issues coming about. Very proud of them being here. So I'll give them a second to address everyone.
Great. Which Bryan's first?
Just like LT said, my name is Brian Bordette. It's very nice to meet everyone here. I appreciate everyone coming out here. I thank you for taking your time out of your day. And I'm just very happy to work with Hardyville Police Department, and very happy to work with each and every single one of you. So I appreciate the opportunity you guys gave me. Thank you.
Welcome.
Cubs fan or White Sox fan?
Cubs.
I like you.
We get along real well.
Besides your baseball preference, we consider ourselves a family here. And so if there's any family information you'd like to share, it's not necessary if you don't, but...
The family that I got here, it's just my girlfriend and our dog. That's the family. We got all my family. They're living in Chicago right now.
Okay, well, welcome. Counsel, any other questions for Brian number one?
Well, I know the chief will want to find out whether he plays really good baseball because of the softball.
Chief already checked that out. You can count on that.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Best wishes.
Thank you.
Brian, number one A.
One A.
You're both number one.
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brian O'Donnell. It's an honor to be here, and I have to say, this is... I've met the nicest people I've ever met working here so far, and I'm thrilled to be here, so thank you.
And you're from Massachusetts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's great to see our former military staying here in the area and joining our police and first responders. So we're really thrilled to have you, and we wish you nothing but success and a long career with Hardyville.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments or questions?
Family here?
I'm married and I have three children.
Well, congratulations.
From elementary school all the way to high school.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
You don't look old enough to have three kids.
Appreciate that, sir.
All right. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have the presentation and approval of minutes from the July 10, 2025, regular city council meeting. Can I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to the minutes per July 10?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all business. This is second reading of an ordinance to adopt the master plan submittal for attractive land consisting of approximately 24 acres, known generally as Cross Schools of East Argent, to include a portion of the parcel 06700-01107, located off East Argent Parkway, and to amend the official zoning map of the city of Hardyville. This is second reading of ordinance 2025-07-10B. Mr. Gruber, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This item appeared at your last regularly scheduled meeting. At that time, there was one question that had come up that we were asked as staff to kind of look into when this came back before you, and that was really with regards to future phases of this development. So right now, what you're considering is the phase that involves the development of the kindergarten or daycare facility. There are future phases that will involve a church and some other structures. And the question that we were asked to look at was emergency access. And so while not a part of this particular development that we're considering this evening, it is something that we have consulted with fire rescue about. They're aware of it. They don't have any concerns at this point, but they will be involved in the process as those other phases come forward for approval. So I wanted to take an opportunity to mention that. I also wanted to let folks know, in case you don't know, this development is within the East Argent PDD, so it is part of that planned development district. And either through the property owner or through the developer, there are appropriate development fees that will be paid to the city pursuant to the terms of that document. And so I think that covers the questions or the issues that we were aware of with regards to this particular item, but happy to answer any other questions that counsel may have.
Thank you. Let's start, counsel, questioning. Well, first, let me open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions regarding this development? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the public record.
Wayne Kulik, a new resident of Sun City for about two years. Wife and I moved from Chicago, Cubs. Moved from Chicago, Cubs fan. We've enjoyed being part of Hardyville. Enjoyed some of your celebrations on the street here, and really enjoyed being part of your community. We are, if you look at the map, where it says Sun City, East Argent, there's a group of about, oh, a dozen home sites there. We are about the sixth one from the right or the left, however you want to count it. Right in line with what I assume was a road that came through there at one time, a logging roll or something like that. First question I have is communication. If it wasn't for Josh, Mr. Gruber, I'm sorry, we would never know what this project was. We have had no communication from the school district. We've had no information that was dropped off at our door, and we're the closest neighbors that they have. Now, just as a point of reference, I used to work for a nonprofit organization, several of them in Chicago. And our process was to develop group homes and vocational settings for people with disabilities all across Cook County and Lake County. We would never start a project without talking to the neighbors. Neighbors can become, who knows, future contributors to our organization. They could become volunteers. They could do a lot. We know nothing about this from the school's point of view. It would have been helpful if they would have come in and addressed the neighbors, particularly the border of that project. Second question I have is vehicle light pollution. If you look at that road coming in off of East Argent Parkway, that road, if it were to continue, would run right into our backyard, which means we are going to have every light for evening access to that property come into our, physically come into our living room, because there are breaks in that tree line that bring everything through there from the project side to the residential side. It would be helpful if we could possibly have some barrier, hopefully green, that would block that area so we wouldn't have a light show of people coming in. Questions? Third question we have is the questionable management of runoff of water. That area has always been extremely wet. For whatever reason, we seem to collect a lot of runoff from other parts of the block there. That section we are is the low point of that entire block, so everything comes in, from the left, from the right, and from the back of the property. I'm concerned that with the water retention areas that are part of this plan, on extremely wet days, we're going to get more coming over that berm at the back of our property. Now, I know that you've built in pumps and things like that to be able to empty those waterways. My question here is who's going to maintain those pumps? Because, as you know, talking to your engineers, if you don't maintain them, they will fail because they get clogged, that kind of thing. So whose responsibility is that going to be? And finally, safety. You know, call me foolish, but having a preschool of 400 children potentially, surrounded by huge groups of water in that area, it just doesn't sound like the safest place for children to receive services. In fact, we always would have our services integrated into the community, not off into a forested area. So I have some concerns about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Derek Hoag. I'm at 695 Sunday's Court, also a property owner in Sun City that borders the proposed Phase One of Cross Church. I have two main concerns that I would hope would be addressed. Number one is construction. I think that's going to be one of our biggest complaints as time goes by. I think we all understand that this is probably going to happen, and we can learn to live with that. But at the same time, as you well know, Mayor, Del Webb and Poltey are both very stringent about construction times. Our construction times in Sun City run from 7:00 a.m., nothing before 7:00 a.m. and nothing after 7:00 p.m. And as construction begins in this new phase, we would hope that the developer could abide by that just for our own peace of mind. We don't need, especially at the very beginning, when we're digging lagoons, when we're taking trees out, when they are flattening the land, doing all that with the heavy machinery, it's going to ruin our morning coffees on the night at 7:00 o'clock. So what we're hoping for is maybe the developer could show some consideration in that regard. The second thing I'd like to bring up is something Robert Frost said a long time ago. Strong fences make good neighbors. And in this entire project, we haven't seen what kind of barrier that they propose to put in between us and them. Is that going to be a normal six-foot chain link fence around a school like we normally see? Are they going to put a privacy fence up? If it's a privacy fence, are they going to try and blend it into the existing trees that we see? Hopefully to help our... Some of the situations, as Wayne mentioned, some of the lights that we are afraid we're going to see more. Right now, we're all forests behind us and very dark, very pleasant back there, and we understand that that's probably going to go away. But those are my two main concerns. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. And I will ask staff, the staff will explain our ordinance. Poltey follows the city ordinance, and I'll ask staff to explain that when we're finished with public comment. Wait, let's get all the public comments in. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the public record. Talk into the microphone because you are on candid camera.
My name is Claire Donato. I am a resident at 789 Sunfish Way, also have a home bordering this property. Thank you for being here today and for your time and your service to our community. It's always appreciated. My major question I have, we've had a hard time getting answers on a lot of these, on questions we have. As I say, we were away traveling, came back, and suddenly had, you know, a week or two to look into all of this. But on this map, it states that there's a 50-foot buffer zone adjacent to the residential properties. We are in that area that, right above the pond, where it says 50-foot buffer, we don't know what's behind that writing. We would like, really like to know, are all those trees that are sitting in that 50-foot buffer zone going to be cleared because of that pond? Because our property, you can see the storm drains behind it. We have serious flooding in our area when it rains. You know, three foot of water that takes four or five days to drain even comes up onto the common areas. And feel strongly that if those trees, those 50-foot trees are going to be cleared, we just think it's going to create a really serious problem with flooding behind our home. I don't, we don't know what the ruling is with those ponds being there. Does that mean that that tree line behind it has to be cleared? We know that there is the dotted wetland line, and those areas can't be cleared. But on that map, it shows that that line actually turns and goes right up to the border. It doesn't come across the back of that pond, that big pond behind Phase One. So those are the main concerns we have, you know, primarily with flooding, obviously with, well, not flooding, but serious water problems. Pooling of water, mosquitoes, you know, already in the summer months when there's heavy, heavy rains and that area pools up. It's not great back there. And obviously also just the privacy that, you know, we had this home with this tree line, and with the common space that Poltey has grassed behind our home, we would only really have about 25 feet of trees left behind our house if that area is cleared. But that's the main question I have, so thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is Linda Longberry here?
I am.
Do you want to read this, or you want me to? I think you should since you're here.
Well, I didn't think I was going to be here, so that's why I sent you.
Okay, here's your, here's your comment that I was going to... Oh, okay.
So my name is Linda Longberry, and I live at 459 Sunfish Way. I also back up to the church. One of my questions was, is the future outreach facility B going to, is that property going to be cleared at the same time as the school? Or at a future date? And then I was concerned about the parking lot behind the school, because it looks like there's going to be lights. I'm sure there'll be lights, their parking lot lights, and I'm wondering if we'll be... lot lights, and I'm wondering if we'll be able to see those through the trees also. There's a dumpster corral and two.
Ms. Longberry, could you get closer to that microphone?
Yep. There's two playgrounds and a dumpster corral on the end of the school, between the school and the church, which are located fairly close to our property. So those are concerns of mine. I don't know if we'll hear kids out there playing, or we won't. I have no idea with, from the map, exactly. I see I have 50-foot of trees, and then it looks like there's a 30-foot wetland easement, and then the future church building. So I'm directly behind that. What else did I, hang on here. Yeah, the five-foot mulched walking trail is going to go behind the church. Not really sure what that's going to be used for. I don't know if the school's using it. I don't know if the public's using it. But it goes behind the church, behind the pond, and then around the school. One of the other concerns I had was the traffic on East Argent. I'm sure you've heard that before. But there are several subdivisions that the only way you can get to them is off East Argent. And the back gate of Sun City is also accessed through that street. I know you've put in a lot of stacked lanes within the school to accommodate for that, but we won't know until it's built and all the traffic's on the street how much traffic's going to be there. And I will say, and I've talked to several people about this, I was very discouraged with the way we were notified about the public meeting for the planning commission. We did not get the notice. I was told it was within your rules of how we should get it because it was sent certified mail. We didn't get the letter. We didn't know there was a letter. It was never sent to us. We never got a notification that it was at the post office. I did hear about it from a neighbor, and I went there, and they had it stacked this high. Nobody had picked them up yet. I know this has been a problem. I've been told it's been a problem for a long time. It needs to be fixed. To spend $9.68 sending a certified letter that's so important it needs to be sent certified mail, and you don't get it, is not acceptable. That's all. And Katie's email address in the public notice was also wrong. So we didn't get the notice. When we did get the notice, the email address was wrong. It's just been not held very well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just got a question.
You have to come, you have to state your name and address for the public record.
My name's Bob Schwigger. I live at 216 Coral Reef Way in Margaritaville. Now, the lady before was putting an arrow up there where they were talking about. A lot of us don't really know for sure what area you were talking about. It sure would be helpful if she would put the arrow up there so we could see what they're talking about and what area. That's my only.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the staff to address some of the questions that were raised.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Josh?
We're prepared to respond.
Okay. Who's going to, Anna, Katie, Josh, who's?
I'll take a first stab at it.
You take a first stab?
I'll reach out and for a lifeline and phone a friend if I need it.
We have the buffers. We have the stormwater issues, the lighting issues, the clearing, also notifications, and also the, the noise ordinances, which we just recently updated.
Yep. All right. So let me start with stormwater and questions about stormwater. So the city's standards require what's called pre- and post-development runoff standards. That is the guidelines by which we inspect and review these types of developments from a stormwater standpoint. And what that means is they have to go out and calculate what is the current amount of stormwater that comes off of this property as it exists today before it's developed, both in terms of volume and in terms of rate of flow. They then have to design a system internal to the property that captures a certain amount of rain that would come down within a period of time, and they have to be able to handle that volume of water on site so that the amount of water that's leaving the property after it's been developed is no greater than what it was before it was developed. And so they typically will hire engineers who will sit down. They will make those calculations. That will be in their submission to the city. When we receive it, we then take it and take it to another set of engineers as third-party experts to say, please review what's been designed and tell us if this is going to be adequate or not. And so as a part of this development, that has been provided for, and that's why it's before you this evening. When it comes the hours for construction, in the city's current ordinance, we do not allow construction-related activities, and those are typically things involving heavy equipment, heavy machinery. We restrict those. And so I, my belief is that Sun City's restrictions are likely a reflection of the city's restrictions. And so we prohibit construction-related activities involving heavy equipment outside the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Saturdays, and no hours of operation on Sundays. And so that will be the expectation for this particular development group, because that is the regulations that apply citywide. The 50-foot buffer protection, the buffer protection standards are meant to be kept as a natural buffer. And so in this instance, it is not something where they're going to go in and tear it all down and then maybe put something back. They're required to measure from the property line, establish those, and then make sure that as a part of the construction, that is always maintained. And so staff then conducts site visits to make sure that the buffers are not encroached upon and that those are maintained throughout the duration of the project. The timing of the clearing, while this will be up to the developer, assuming that this goes forward if it's approved by the city, we can't control how much land they clear. What we're approving is the master plan that allows them to go forward with this. Now, whether they do this immediately or over a period of a couple of years, it's really entirely up to them. I would tell you, more likely than not, when they go in there with the heavy equipment, they're going to do it one time, do what they need to do, and then leave. And so while I can't say for certain, it's probably likely that most of the improvements that you see here from a land development standpoint will probably be prepared as part of this, this phase. When it comes to the parking lot lights, we do have lighting standards that require shields, downward-facing lights, other things that are in place to make sure that forms of light pollution are limited. And so we have some very clear standards that we require. And actually, again, a lot of times, they'll have to hire an engineer to submit to us a lighting plan showing how they will meet the city's standards for containing the lighting within their property. When it comes to traffic, we require a traffic impact analysis that's supposed to look at how does this development impact the surrounding roadways. Sometimes it's significant, other times it's nominal. But a lot of times, it may require improvements or things where the developer may have to make contributions to this area. For example, the East Argent Parkway is something that is being built by the developers. It's not something that's being built by the city, but it's necessary in order to hold, handle the volume of traffic that will come out from not only this development, but the other developments that are along the East Argent Parkway. When it comes to notifications, so there's several different steps and several different notifications. This property, just as an example, would have initially been vetted from terms of being annexed into the city. So most property starts out in the unincorporated, in this case, I believe it's unincorporated Jasper County. And so in order to come into the city, we have to post this. We have to send out notifications. We have to hold public meetings and public hearings. Now, for this particular property, that likely occurred many years ago. A lot of our development agreements are from the early 2000s. And so a lot of times, you wouldn't have received notice from that because most of you probably weren't here during those times. But that is the process that we require. And then when they come forward, they do the same thing to get a development agreement. They then come forward to do the same thing for an initial master plan, which is what we have this evening. And so we do require that the applicants send out formal notice to all residents that are identified within a certain radius of the project. Unfortunately, the only mechanism that we have to try to transmit those documents is the United States Postal Service. When it comes to ensuring that the postal service does their job and the letters get to where they need to, there's only so much that we can do. However, our meetings are just like they are tonight. They're posted, they're noticed, they're broadcast. That way, we can give everybody as much opportunity to become aware about these projects, appear, ask questions, learn information, so we can address those concerns. I do know that staff is working on potential modifications to our notice regulations. I believe they just presented something recently to the planning commission, and so that's going to be coming forward to city council for their review. We're always looking for better ways that we can reach out and notify the public. And if we can come up with standards that'll reach more people than we're currently doing now, then we'll look at proposing and pursuing those. I think I covered everything, but if there's a subject matter that I missed, let me know, and I'm happy to go back and revisit it.
Okay. Well, first things first, public comment is closed now. The, what I would ask before I turn it over to council questions, could you, staff, please explain on the entire perimeter what the buffers are in each section, particularly the ones that are behind the Sun City homes?
So the entire perimeter has a 50-foot undisturbed buffer. In addition, where there's a wetland, the undisturbed area is an additional 20 feet from there. So, so all this dark green is wetland area here. Where it's not wetland, it will be a minimum of 50 feet, but it may be more if it's not, if it's not necessary to clear.
On the top middle, Katie, what, where, see, that's the walking path?
Yeah.
What are the, what is the distance of that wooded area between this development and the back of those homes?
It's a minimum of 50 feet on the Sun City side and a minimum of 50 feet on the cross-school side. So it would be a minimum of 100 feet combined.
There's 100 feet.
Correct.
Between the two. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's open it up to council questions now. Mr. Miesman, do you want to lead us off?
Sure. My, my question with the project, and I, it was addressed, is I still share concern over the one entrance and exit for the school property. I would, I would feel much better that if there was another exit somewhere up in this area. I know this is something that emergency services will discuss and, and, and take into consideration, but I just feel that a second emergency exit is absolutely necessary. Where their main entrance is, it's at the cross on East Argent Parkway there. And I live in a community where we do have one entrance and exit, and we've had some major problems there. I just been very uncomfortable having children put into that situation. That's all.
Ms. Guzman?
I have, the only question that I have, and I neglected to ask this at the first reading, was I see several ponds, and I know we have little ones that's going to be going to school there. And you know, all you have to do is just turn your head for one minute, and, and they're gone. What bothers me is those ponds, you normally, any pond, you know, eventually you'll find a gator or two in there. What are you going to do to prevent little ones from skedaddling out of there and getting into a pond and some, and something bad happening to that child?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Kaiser come up and explain the plan for the school.
Again, good evening. Steve Kaiser, I represent the owner, applicant. Great question. It's, it's fortunate that the dinosaurs that we're dealing with are relatively small when you compare them to Jurassic Park. They're nonetheless dangerous, and we greatly appreciate that. So we have security measures in place now on our existing campus that deal with that. We, we have not had an incident. God help us, we don't expect there to be an incident. It's a programmatic issue. It's always discussed at safety meetings. We work closely with the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources. We don't feed animals, whether they're alligators or deer, on our campus in any way possible, whether it's through vegetative planting or just things that we obviously see sometimes we don't like, which are hand-feeding exercises that people do on resort locations when it comes to alligators. We don't do that. If we have a problem area, we have fenced it. We have a good fencing program that would require some sort of aesthetic approval process for us to have an additional security layer. And we know that every time you build a freshwater pond, you're going to have an alligator in our community, in our neighborhood, in our culture just because of our latitude, 32 degrees latitude. So we have that concern all the time. We train people to not let little ones get away. They're really good at that. That has not happened. If we need to fence the lagoons for safety reasons, we'll do it. We know how to keep an alligator out of a lagoon. So we, we feel like they're always going to be an issue for us, and we're certainly conscious of making sure that's on everybody's high radar screen at all times.
The reason I ask is because we all know how little ones, they get away, they just disappear, and they can get up to mischief at the blink of an eye. And I think one has to remember what happened in Disney several years ago, that two-year-old that was dragged underwater by a gator, and his parents were right there. So that's what goes through my mind when I see stuff like that and kids are involved. That whole unfortunate incident comes to mind when, when I see stuff like this and children are involved in the equation.
We don't, we don't disagree with you. We're very concerned about it.
Thank you.
Safety issue.
So you are going to do everything in your power to make sure that those pond, I know, and gators climb fences. We all know that.
That's right. They do. They do.
So, so I don't know what you're going to do to fix that.
Well, we have some solutions for that, too.
Okay.
But we do have a very good ratio of faculty and administration in terms of this age group of people. It's not just one-to-one. We have multiple staff members in each classroom, and they never let them out. Playgrounds are all fenced in, so they can't just wander off. Classroom doors, any exterior door is going to be locked from the outside, so kids can't push over. So there are a lot of internal security issues, too, that prevent them from just being able to walk out.
Wander off.
Unobserved.
Okay.
It just hasn't happened. But it is a concern, always, always.
Thank you. Thanks.
Indeed.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm done, sir.
Mr. White?
The only comment I have served for you when you were talking about having your coffee on the terrace, I hope that those operating times for the developers are helpful to make sure that there's compliance with that, particularly no work on Sundays. So hopefully you'll have that information, and let us know if that gets violated. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Well, both my questions were answered. Mr. Mayor, I wanted the buffer, and I was 50, 50, 50 feet on each side, so you got 100-foot buffer. And then Steve was talking about the one entrance. But I met with Josh last week, and he assured me that once the school is finished and they start the church part, that that will be addressed. And it is an area pretty well designated for emergency entrance. So my second question was answered.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I think Mrs. Guzman raises a key question about the gators. And looking at the, and I didn't think of this before either, so thank you, Mrs. Guzman. Knowing, living on a lagoon myself, come April, these gators are, are looking for companionship, and they're going between lagoons. And looking at the location, we do have to be concerned about them migrating and be out of the water. So I hear you, and I know that you want to, you're going to pay attention to it. But I think that Mrs. Guzman's caution is well-taken. We don't want to overlook anything and regret it later. So I think that should be taken into account when you deal with the security issues around those lagoons. I also, you know, I'm going to address the, the entrances. If you go up East Argent Parkway, across the street from there is, was it Twin Ponds? We have the cottages. We have the cottages. We have Riverton Point. And right now, Sun City, I know there's going to be later on another entrance planned. But all these, which will have more traffic than this, all have one entrance. Is that, am I correct? The Twin Ponds, the, they have one entrance. Riverton has two. Okay. Sun City will have two? Okay. I think it's a legitimate concern, but not in the near future, not for me, anyway. I mean, it's, we should always have something for the first responders, and I agree with Mr. Miesman in there, but I think Phase One doesn't require it. I don't know what we should put in this to, as a Part B. We either put it in the document as a requirement, or we don't.
I hesitate to put it in the document as a requirement, because we also do want to look at the overall access management plan for East Argent Parkway, and we need to make sure that things are spaced appropriately. There's more to it than just having the two access points.
Also, when, excuse me, when you get to our SRC process, the Staff Review Committee process, it, once again, everyone's looking at it again, and that is the appropriate time when they're building that, those other structures, that that would be triggered, and the fire marshal, and all of the other engineers, and everybody will be looking at it. Traffic gets kicked in again. So, I think the relief mechanism's there without having to put it in that document.
But what Mr. Miesman's asking for, and this is where, you know, I want to make sure that we have some public record. An emergency services entrance doesn't necessarily require that A, it be used for any other purpose, or B, it doesn't necessarily have to be used if the other entrance is unblocked, right? But having it there is, seems to make some sense.
Right. There's specific requirements through the fire code that determines, depending on types of developments, one and two, family, multifamily, industrial, commercial, and this kind of falls in that commercial realm. That's based on the height and square footage of the buildings, and that determines the amount of ingress and egress into that particular development.
Okay. So, this will be handled at site review? Okay. And I would remind myself and everybody that site review includes our fire marshal.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. All right. We have had public comment. We've had council comments. So, at this point, we are ready to entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to this is second reading of ordinance 2025-07-10B.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve on second reading, ordinance 2025-07-10B.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to call for a voice vote on this. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay. It's approved, and good luck. Take care of those kids. Next, we have new business. This is first reading of an ordinance to consider an initial master plan for parcels, I'm not going to read them all, they're up there, to be known as Riverport Parkway North and Riverport Parkway Phase One. There's 1,074 acres, and it's part of the Riverport PDD. This is 2025-07-24A. Before I turn this over to Mr. Gruber and staff, I just, I know there's a lot of people here interested in this. I just want to make sure that everybody understands the rules of order. We've had a lengthy workshop. We had a lengthy meeting that was tabled a month ago. So, I'm going to be strict with the rules of order for public comment. Everyone will have their three minutes. There will be a grand total of 30 minutes, and no one will be allowed to speak more than once. I'm saying this upfront, so please, as you hear the presentations, that any, you form your comments and your questions accordingly, knowing that the public comment will be strictly enforced. So, having said that, I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Gruber.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to cover a couple of topics for the audience's benefit, to make sure that you understand kind of what is before council, what we're talking about, how we got here, so that there's a better understanding of what it is that we're looking at, what it is that we're debating, and what it is that we're going to be asking them to take action on. So, this property in particular, part of the Riverport development, is part of a 5,000-acre tract that prior to 2006 would have been in the unincorporated Jasper County. So, in 2006, a petition was submitted to annex the property into the city limits of Hardyville. So, that took place, and that property was, all 5,000-plus acres was brought into the city in 2006. In 2009, a development agreement was approved with the city. And what a development agreement does is it lays out how those 5,000 acres are going to be developed. So, the items that we're talking about tonight, the 1,900 homes in this particular pod, in this particular phase of the development, was spelled out in that 2009 document, along with a lot of other development opportunities for that entire 5,000 acres. And so, the question about whether or not this property should be developed has already been answered. That is not what is before the City Council this evening. What's before the City Council is looking at the initial master plan. So, that is, where are the roads? Where's the drainage? How are the utilities going to look? What are the impacts to traffic? Those are all questions that should and will be covered as part of reviewing the master plan. But as far as whether or not this should remain pine forest, or whether it should be developed, that is not a question that is before this body, because that decision has already been made, and the owners of the property are vested with the right to go forward and develop it for the purposes that were approved by the city back in 2009. So, hopefully that kind of makes it clear the scope of what it is that we're talking about this evening. There was also some questions that came up last time about the timeline for this development. So, if the City Council grants approval, that entitles them to move forward with actually finalizing plans for the site development. They will come through the Staff Review Committee to actually get land disturbance permits, and it's only after that happens that they can then go out there, start logging the property, clearing trees, and moving dirt around to sculpt it to be in line with the plans that were approved as part of the master plan. That does take time. Beyond that, it then takes time to put in the roads, it takes time to put in the utilities, it takes time to build the houses, it then takes time to sell the houses. So, right now, our fastest-growing community is selling about 300 houses per year. That number might go up a little bit, that number might go down a little bit, depending upon the markets, but that is our fastest-growing one. And most of our other communities are growing at a slower rate than that. So, if you take an average of what we can expect, realistically, as staff, we're anticipating maybe 100, maybe 150, even maybe the upper limits of 200 units would be built and sold within a year's time. So, if we're talking about 1,000 of the 1,900 homes, that's a minimum of four to six years, not including the lead time that it takes to clear the property, to do the landscaping, to install the utility. So, this is a development that, if it does move forward, is not going to be built immediately overnight. It is going to be over a number of years before they start reaching the upper limits of what might be approved. And then, there was also a question about, at the end of the meeting, kind of procedurally, what had happened. There was a lot that was going on, and so I wanted to explain, there was a motion to approve that was bade, and that motion failed to get a majority vote on council. That action does not in and of itself dispose of the matter. Rather, the floor is still open up for any other motions that might be made, or any other kind of intervening motions. And so, council ultimately decided to make an intervening motion to postpone to a future date, which is why we're here this evening. So, I know that there was some confusion about that, and people may say, well, there was a vote, and the vote failed. Yes, it did, but that does not automatically cause the item to fail. There needs to be a motion to deny that then receives a positive majority vote in order for council to act one way or the other on an item. So, those are the three things that I kind of wanted to tee up. I do want to take an opportunity to invite the development team to come up and give a presentation. There's been a number of questions and concerns that have come up, and they've done, I think, a fairly valiant job at trying to, one, capture all of those, and then provide sufficient information to help address them. And so, I think it would be good to get that information before we move further into questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. I see that you're up here, so why don't you state your name and your affiliation for the public record?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff. My name is Lamar Mercer. I'm with Thomason Hutton Engineering Company, based out of Savannah. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, GH Commercial, and the development team. Also have here tonight with me is Stuart Day with StanTech Consulting, Traffic Consulting, to be able to try to address any comments or questions you have. So, thank you for the opportunity. I realize there's a lot on the agenda tonight, a lot to get through, a lot of people in the room, so I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. We did prepare this presentation to try to help supplement and address the questions that came out of the last meeting. So, there are some slides we'll go through very briefly, and then kind of land on the bullet points of questions at the end, and try to answer them directly. But thank you, Josh, by the way, for the lead-ins. Good to have that history. But I did want to start off with the fact that, started putting this together after the last meeting, and have said it a couple of different times, but then it dawned on me, it really has been 16 years of working on this project, as, you know, as evidenced by the fact that the Environmental Cultural Resource Studies have been ongoing since 2009. So, it speaks volumes to the thoroughness of the investigations of all the bodies of work that have occurred for this piece of property and vetting. And thinking back even further, there has been at least three public meetings for the interchange itself, and numerous, numerous public meetings related to all the various activities, whether it's the DA, the PDD, TIF, the MID, all those kind of things. So, as Josh said, it is a 5,000-acre piece of property. It was annexed in '06, PDD modified, adopted in 2009. I want to reiterate what the vision of Riverport really is. It is a mixed-use development, truly is. The interchange is kind of the hub of everything, that Exit 3 with commercial radiating around it, business park uses to the south, which has been identified on the Highway 17 corridor as the development for that area to house that type of activity. And then, on the north end, residential lands in that area, which is adjacent to existing residential and downtown Hardyville. So, I felt like those locations were the most appropriate. That mixed use will consist of, like I said, as far as job opportunities, business park leading all the way through professional medical office complexes was contemplated. Nobody has a crystal ball, but that is a real potential opportunity, and there's spaces left for those things to occur. Going into that, going further through that and the job opportunities, one thing that was created throughout the process of Exit 3 since 2010 was engaged CHMURA to provide an economic impact assessment. That was part of a requirement of going through the state infrastructure bank to vet the process and vet the project. And as you can see, I'm not going to read off all the information, but it's fairly significant, it's really significant of what this project will do for this region. 12,000 jobs created, ongoing jobs, as you can see, the amount of 1.9 billion. It was shocking to me when I first saw this, and I had to stop and ask numerous questions, but it finally, it landed, once you read through all the information to understand that. And then, really, what it lends on at the very end of this is the ongoing annual property tax for Hardyville, Jasper County, and School District. It's 95 million annually. That's a very large number. That is very significant, including approximately 40 million annually for the school board. And please stop me at any point if you have any questions. Just wanted to bring this slide. I know you've seen this numerous times. This does, this does highlight what Exit 3 really is, and what this project really is tonight, is where Exit 3 is, the Parkway North, which is a red section of roadway, which is an integral part of the interchange itself, because you have to have a logical terminal in the south, which the south Parkway came before you earlier this year and then last year for approval, and was approved. And this portion includes the Parkway North. One of the questions that came out of the last meeting was, try to give some kind of graphic representation to a 3D model. So, I am looking for input on this tonight, that this land, like you wanted it to. But we tried to, we tried to graphically represent the best as possible how the routing of traffic will occur throughout the property, Riverport as a whole. Because again, go back to the basic explanation, there are, the business park uses are, will be on the south side of the interchange, whereas the residential, commercial, mainly residential, the north side. Hopefully, everybody can see this to indicate what you see through the middle of the screen is I-95. We kind of orient, we roughly rotate this around to make it more readable.
This is the point right here, the green.
Kind of like waving my hands around everywhere. This is I-95, sorry, through the middle of the screen, and then the IMP is the residential area in question we're discussing. This is the business park uses on the south end, sorry. All the tractor-trailer traffic will be concentrated in this area and not anticipated to go north. As required, as part of the IMP process, a traffic impact analysis was prepared by Stuart Day.
I don't mean to interrupt, but some people back here can't hear. I'm just, I'm just, you know, sorry.
I apologize. I'll try to do a better job of speaking into the mic. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. As I was saying, a TIA was performed by StanTech and has been reviewed by the city's traffic consulting, and I think they, I know they concur with the assessment. We have been in contact and had, as late as yesterday, some feedback from DOT, traffic reviewer, and they are in agreement. Now, we're going through these final comments, but they're in agreement with the improvements that are proposed for the Church Road 321 intersection, which will, is proposed to currently consist of a roundabout to be created and be under construction by the 250th Certificate of Occupancy. One thing I did want to point out, because this was a concern that was listed last time, the current level of service for that intersection is currently exists at a level of Service C, based on the data gathered from field inspections, which results in a calculated peak delay of approximately 23 seconds. With the proposed improvements, which means build level of service will end up as an improvement to a level of Service B, and reduce the delay down to approximately 12 seconds, almost half of what currently exists with the development of the property in this project. Otherwise, if it continues on, it will continue to deteriorate to a level of Service C. Did want to point out, since we have DOT's ear and understand that we visit the site, the Romo strips along Church Road leading into the intersection at Purvisburg, they have deteriorated. DOT acknowledges that's an issue, so we're going to continue this conversation, but it will require bringing in their operations and maintenance department. So, we'll continue to push that as much as possible. We'll probably need to engage with, you know, city or bring you guys into that conversation, too. Question was asked during the last meeting, distance from our primary intersection into the development down to 321, measured is approximately 3,200 linear feet. And we're going to address this, too. I think there were some questions, maybe also following what a roundabout, and I know it's hard to see on this plan, but there was a prior version of a concept for a roundabout at this intersection. As you can see, it does fit pretty well inside of that intersection, as it exists right now, and hopefully minimizes or eliminates any need for any additional right-of-way acquisition. Stormwater, as required in the PDD and state and federal guidelines, I can assume, Ms. Guzman, because I know this is a hotspot for you, we will have to, we do abide by all those requirements. That's just a requirement we have to adhere to. Did want to point out that the pond system will be designed, as we do, to be able to contain with emergency overflow wears, the 100-year event. We ensure that all homes are above the 100-year elevations, and your ordinances require this, which is, does go, to your point, always above and beyond, does require finished floors to be above that, which, that's a good thing. Culvert's designed to adhere and minimize upstream, both in minimize upstream and downstream conveyances. But the main differentiator with this project that is unique has been the But the main differentiator with this project that is unique has been the ongoing communication, which in the list of questions we'll get to the end, the amount of agencies and entities that have been negotiated with and vetted this project is large. And the fact that this agreement through the wetland permitting process, there's an agreement that was reached with the Southern Environmental Law Center, SCLC, who is representing kind of a conglomeration of entities in the area who have environmental interest. The requirement was, the requirement in the agreement as it's established right now is to introduce or install seven surface water HBH hobo monitoring wells, which will provide real-time monitoring and reporting back online for people to utilize. We actually had a field visit about three or four weeks ago with members of SCLC and voluntarily, we found a couple of the areas and voluntary agreed to install four additional monitoring wells. There's seven downstream, four upstream. In addition to that, negotiated, there's also been voluntarily provided a 200-foot minimum buffer along the Wildlife Refuge south of I-95. I realize we're talking about north of I-95, but I want to recognize the fact that there was a prior property conveyance of 276 acres, as noted on the slide, to accommodate that buffer between Purvisburg Road and Wildlife Refuge. There will be a minimum 50-foot underserved well and buffer established around the preserved well and areas that lead into the Wildlife Refuge. In addition, going back to the overarching goal of going above and beyond, this project is, will adhere through the agreement to meeting the requirements of the SLCO of retaining the 85th percentile storm, something the city has been trying to achieve. So that is incorporated into this agreement. There's permanent monitoring funds that will be established and to that point, the, there will be a board established, as you can see, for environmental restoration, coastal resilience, land to acquisition projects, and applicant has committed to fund that to the tune of approximately $7 million. This is just a slide showing the hobo monitoring wells, the yellow boxes there is just pointing to where those locations are and all the appropriate outfalls. This is the IMP area in the north. There's one, two, three. There's a Hardyville Jasper County canal that drains the northern area of, of the city down through the property. So there'll be monitoring well at that location as well as well and outfalls. We'll have incoming monitoring well so we can gauge quality of water as it comes through the system. Just to point out, had this graphic just so it was easier for everybody to understand, that area was discussed in the 276 acres, the IMP area is north of this, the 276 acres that were conveyed to United States for Federal Wildlife Refuge were in this area. And then south is where a 200-foot, minimum 200-foot larger in this area, approximately 700-foot buffer have been conveyed to, or will be preserved on-site for buffering for the property. Cultural resources, mentioned earlier, this project has been ongoing since 2009. Full compliance, level-one archaeological surveys have been performed by RS Web and Associates. So there's, again, 15, 16 years with the data. It's reviewed by SHPO, it has been reviewed thoroughly vetted by SHPO, Jasper County Historical Society and Battlefield Preservation Trust requested participation in the ultimate MO vermerand of understanding that has been executed and the Battlefield Trust actually signed the MOU. Through the efforts and coordination by RS Web and SHPO, the Purvisburg Battlefield Site, the limits of that were actually provided by SHPO to us for use. And it stipulated there are buffers that overlay on the property where it is applicable, and they're actually shown, it's hard to tell, but they're actually, they're represented and reflected on our plan to, to represent that 50-foot buffer. Through the MOU and SHPO's standard process, phase-two testing and evaluation is, is allowed. There's currently one, two, three, four sites ongoing at this time, and there, as we move through this fall into next year, additional testing will occur and it will be, you know, cleared and not, not, no longer, no preservation further required or a way to be preserved in place through covenants and buffers. Part of the, part of the MOU conditions are educational materials to be provided and to SHPO and US Army Corps every year for the treatment plan identified for each site to keep them updated as this process continues. We recognize Purvisburg Road is, as it's called out in there, is a historical resource, be able to develop it, but as part of that, there will be a historical document prepared to monument that as well as a plaque monument to be placed at Millstone Landing to document the Purvisburg Road area. Question was asked also about providing a copy, and we did, I've said this numbers of times, wanted to make sure I was right, but we did check with SHPO and it is a requirement. This information really does not need to be out in the public realm in order to prevent unauthorized discovery and disturbance. We did talk with RS Web. They are going through the document, redacting, scrubbing it, but they still need to be able to send it to SHPO to make sure it is scrubbed thoroughly enough that it meets their requirements. So once that's completed, we can provide the document. And last, just wanted to hit on one of the other questions too was wastewater pump stations. There are, there are two wastewater pump stations inside the project, this being the first in the phase-one area that will be developed. We have had ongoing conversations, bi-weekly meetings with Buford Jasper Water and Sewer Authority, which have been very helpful, have provided their asset map. So we, we performed initial modeling, we're continuing that dialogue with them because Frank Buford Jasper is, is working through some rerouting of facilities from the 278 area in west back through to the Hardyville Wastewater Treatment Plant. So we don't have a defined answer yet, but it is an ongoing process and whatever, whatever conditions that exist and is existing pump stations along Purvisburg, or excuse me, Church Road in any of these areas will be, will be accounted for in anything we discharge into that system. So any questions? We just want, I just want to hit the bullet points, if that's okay, real quick? Do we have time or do you, do you really want?
I want you to complete everything you want to present to the public and then I'm going to open it up to, to, for public comment.
Okay.
Anything you want the public to know?
Yes.
Anything you have to say, let's say it now before I open it up to the public.
Well, some of this is duplicative, so I won't spend too much time on it, but one question was a clear and simple explanation of traffic counts and data. AM peak hour is projected to be the highest level of services, which is what we represented in the slide earlier, and it's from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Again, level of service C currently existing with improvements in the 2033 condition, that intersection will improve to a level of service B with the introduction of these improvements. There was a question related to the school buses per day on Church Road. We checked the Jasper County website, as referenced here, the school district website. It listed one bus route on Church. That's best information we could obtain. I'm not saying there's any others don't travel down through there, but that's what's published. Provided approved concept by SC DOT and TIA. We, as mentioned earlier, we have been in communication since the last meeting and even before that and had some documentation back yesterday from Josh Johnson with DOT. He's in general agreement, just got to work out some last details for the proposed improvements. Must not only accommodate future traffic, but must, yeah, I think it covered that above. Confirmed distance, as mentioned earlier, is 3,200 feet. Worked with city manager, determined maximum. I think this comment was related to the fact that it was initially considered to be 500 units. Applicant has agreed that the, the implementations improvement will begin, will have begun by the 250th CO. Discuss number of strip, all right, as mentioned earlier, we'll continue ongoing conversations with DOT related to the Romo strips. 3D map was as included in the slideshow. Construction safety plan. We touched on this prior. We will obviously encourage the contractor to adhere to all local guidelines related to traffic safety measures. It will be their responsibility. We will ask for support from the city to help enforce those measures because they will be public roads, once they're on Church Road, obviously, and others. Scroll to the next, sorry. There's a question, explain wetland permit process and other agencies. Eric, kind of like you mentioned at the beginning of this, a number of parcels included. I was trying to add this up earlier as I was sitting here. I believe there's at least 15 or 16 entities that we have engaged with throughout this entire permitting process over 16 years. So process is section 404 wetland permit process. You apply to them, you go through vetting, reviews, public notices, and eventually land on, because this had an interchange associated with a finding of no significant impacts that allowed this to be approved. Going above and beyond, I think we touched on most of that throughout the slideshow related to any of the stormwater measures and the accommodations the applicant has agreed to with MOU and SCLC. Same, again, wanted to touch back on that, explain measures to prevent Savannah River pollution contamination. There's always a balance between stormwater quantity and quality and the amount of discharge and the need to retain as much on, as onsite as possible. It's actually state requirement, can't, can't release any sooner than 24, or release through a 24-hour period. So it's best that these pond systems, with how they're designed, which is reasonably accepted as the method of, of stormwater treatment, is these ponds gather sediment into them and are allowed to settle those sediments and particulates out to the bottom. But to ensure proper quality, water quality measures are implemented and adhere to, the hobo, hobo wells will be there in place to actually capture that data to confirm. And if there's any issues required to rectify those immediately. Change road name. So the application still reads Riverport Parkway North. I did want to touch on this. Applicant has no issues with leaving that as Purvisburg Road. Only reason it ever came into being as named Riverport Parkway is because I think everybody in this room can recognize Purvisburg Road is the long section of roadway. It was just the easiest way to designate for agencies, contractors, us, everybody to understand what the limits of this project really were, the one and a half miles to the north and the four miles to the south. So we will work with DOT in making sure as exit three and I-95 is developed, any appropriate signage will still list Purvisburg Road unless there's another process that comes along and anybody wants a different out to. But we have, again, back to the main point, we have no issues with leaving this Purvisburg. I think there's a little bit more. As I mentioned earlier, cultural resource survey, same thing, redacted version. We just need RS Web to finish that and give that to SHPO for final confirmation. And list stations, I touched on that prior. So, sorry, appreciate you allowing me that much time to go through this and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. You may come back, the council may have questions. Okay, as I, as I mentioned to, as we started, I'm going to adhere strictly to our rules of order, which will be three minutes for every speaker. After every speaker speaks, so that we can make sure that everybody's feelings and opinions are heard, I will ask if, for a show of hands, who agrees with that statement? So that way you don't have to come up and say the same thing. We will hold a three-minute time limit and a 30-minute speaking time, not pauses in between. So that means if, if everybody speaks three minutes, that means 10 people will have the ability to speak. Okay? And after we hear from the public, then I'll open it up for council questions and comments. All right. So at this time, anyone from the public who would like to make a comment or ask a question, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, my name is Mary Caitlin Draper. I live at 383 McGelwey Estates. I am the fish hook road that is not included in the town limits, or a little bit of Purvisburg, I guess, town limits. My question was Church Road itself. I feel like we have a lot of families in that area existing. I feel like we need sidewalks and I'm not sure if the plans reflect that. I know this is probably a separate, I think it would be separate from the Riverport because it's not in the Riverport plans, but I feel like if you're improving roads, I would strongly suggest, since they're building a county or, there's like a, a school going up in that area as well. So there will be an increase of school buses, which, which is fine. I'm a preschool teacher, so I'm all about it for safety. I'm glad you guys are replacing the strips, but definitely sidewalks, there's a lot of people who like to walk on that street and exercise. I also want to mention, there's a lot of drag racing going on. People, it's a county road. I live on a county road, but it looks like a private just cut-off road and they sit in front of my house and then they speed up to the stop sign. They feel like they're hiding because there's a whole line of pine trees. So with this project going on, there's going to hopefully be a lot more police presence, but definitely the sidewalks and crosswalk in front of that school, even though it's not there. I just feel like with the kids trying to cross the street, maybe those blinking stop signs, but yes, that's all I have. So if anybody wants to take the rest of my one minute, they can.
Okay. We already have an extra minute and 17. Next, anyone else? Oh, I forgot, I forgot my own rules. Who agrees with that last statement? Please raise your hand. So you all agree sidewalks and more police presence? All right? Okay, thank you.
My name is Steve Talbot. I live at 385 Full Sweep East. I'm here in a twofold position. As a resident of Hardyville, I want to see Hardyville move forward. And as chairman of the Planning Commission, I support this project I did when they came before us. I think the developer has answered the questions on stormwater will be, the flooding on Church Road will be taken care of as he develops. Traffic, you can't blame the developer for drag racing, you can't blame the developer for people speeding on Church Road. That's not his problem. That's, that's another, another problem that needs to be addressed, but I do support this project. I supported it when, when they came before the Planning Commission and I ask the council, please support this project, see Hardyville move ahead. It's a win-win for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone in the public agrees with Mr. Talbot? Please raise your hand. Okay, all right. Thank you. We're ahead of schedule. Ms. Butler?
I'm Deborah Butler and I reside at 107 Roberts Lane, which is in Purvisburg. My concern is the traffic and on, on Purvisburg Road. I read the vision established between the owners of the property and the city council when you develop, when the development agreement was signed. And what, what you've done is created a corridor, some of which is not part of this project, but the ultimate, the ultimate outcome will be a corridor that runs right through our community of semis going to exit eight, I mean, exit three, the warehouses and the ports and continuing probably south on exit three. You know, when I read this, this is what's in the, in the agreement. When completed, Riverport Parkway is anticipated to be a four-lane, limited access arterial roadway that will provide a route to exit three via a connection to US Highway 321 at the north end and US Highway 17 at the southern end and will ultimately serve as a primary access to future development within the property. I don't know if any of you have ridden the complete Purvisburg Road from 321. That traffic will not come to Hardyville down 321. They will cut off on Purvisburg Road, which is a country road and come all the way through every one of our home, where all of us live. So, you know, trying to think of what could you guys do? You inherited an unfortunate situation because you inherited, like your administrator said, something that can be developed. And I've been scurrying around, talking to people, one thing that can happen, according to someone with the South Carolina Department of Transportation, this, this body could pass an ordinance limiting the number of axles that can travel on Purvisburg Road, the part that you control. Admittedly, that's harder to do through the state, but you could actually limit that. They do it in cities all the time to protect their, some of their areas. You've seen bypasses, things like that. You could do that and that would mean that those semis could not get to exit three by coming through our communities and through our two historic cemeteries. So I please ask you, I know it's not part of this project. So I please ask you, I know it's not part of this project, but we missed our opportunity to have more of an input in this development. So this, I'm speaking to the future and what's coming. When that, when that interchange is developed, it's going to destroy our community and our churches, I mean, our cemeteries right there have no protection. I checked with the highway department, there's no right-of-way there. I don't, I don't know how they would four-lane through there. But anyway, that's one concern and one possible solution.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Am I out of time?
You're out of time.
Okay. I'll write the rest up and send it to you. Thank you very much.
Could I have a show of hands? Okay. Seen a lot of hands on that side. Okay. Next. Good afternoon.
I'm Danny McKenzie, 6471 Purysburg Road. And like Councilman Carroll here, I've been here all my life. I'll get right to the point about this particular development, about the driveway on the Church Road. That's a public safety hazard. It's been recognized by this council as being such. It was talked about in the workshop, and two council members said, I think it was number six on your map at the workshop, this driveway, and two council members stated that it was a public safety hazard. So in my view, not an attorney, but in my view, if you, if this body has recognized that is a public safety hazard, and if they've acknowledged it, then you have the authority to do something about this, this hazard. In fact, I think at this point, you probably have an obligation to do something about it. So my suggestion is that you have the developer to simply abandon that driveway that goes from the development on the Church Road. That solves the problem. Go ahead.
Who agrees with that?
Uh, yeah.
Next, please.
Hi.
Hello. Thank you for letting us talk, and thank you for listening to the community. My name is Anethia Nita Flowers. I'm a Michael, 275 Old Charleston Highway. And I thank you all for listening to the community, but you have to travel Old Church Road to actually feel it. I have seen two trucks, I don't know where they're going. I said, has construction, have they started building already? Because they're there already. And I wanted to talk about the 321. Do you guys travel and try to cross 321? Because it's like the game we play, chicken crossing the road. And I always tell my kids, when you get to 321, look twice, look again, and look again because they're coming. I don't know how a roundabout is going to affect the 18-wheelers that always come through 321. And we just have to cross over. Right now, it's a lot of construction right there at the interstate. So I don't know the plans on that part, but Church Road, you can't widen. You can't widen because there's residential on each side of the highway. So if you're talking about safety, that should be the first thing you think about. Now, on the first workshop, I think I heard, I think it was Dwayne Lee, he said, why can't you just build another road that's going to accommodate, I think I heard, 500 houses first built? I challenge the mayor and the council to demand a highway improvement before any houses are built. You have that authority. You have that authority to say, before any houses are built, let's take care of the safety issues, let's take care of the highway first, and then let's, don't put the chicken before the egg. Okay? So I'm asking you to deny this motion, this motion of moving this project forward until you address the safety issues that Purysburg residents live daily. I thank you for listening.
Okay, it's hand time. Anyone else?
My name's Tony Bennett. I live on Purysburg Road. Tony Bennett, live on Purysburg Road. And my concerns is the Exit 3 part, the same as Ms., what's her name was talking about, Ms. Deborah? And, but another thing I'm thinking about is the construction traffic. Well, it's already admitted, gonna start clearing trees, we're gonna be doing stuff like that. I work construction. I've been in construction all my life. I know how these projects go, I know how they start, I know how they finish. So he's gonna sit here and tell us that his workers, he's only gonna use one exit for now, coming on the Church Road, one entry. So the workers are gonna be coming out of there. It starts out pretty simple. You start out with surveyors, you start out with mapping out everything, then you come into your logging part, and you got log trucks, you got heavy equipment. Then you come into the building, and you got all the employees. Y'all know how these things, these projects are built on speed. Speed means more people. Okay? I'm in construction. There's not a lot of local people that can handle projects this big, not here in town. That means you're gonna be bringing in employees. We all know that. Okay? That means housing, motels, it means food, restaurants. Hardyville can accommodate all that right now? I don't think so. And I'm sorry to say, I mean, I love Hardyville. I've been here 32 years. The property that's adjacent to their property has belonged to my wife since 82. Okay? And to your comment, you said, oh, about the notices? We've never got a notice, that it was being adopted into anything, nothing, that Hardyville even was gonna annex it, or they was gonna develop it in 2009. We got nothing. So I said, this is all new to us, and I'm sorry to say. But, you know, you, all this construction traffic is gonna come in and out, it's gonna be a terror on Church Road. Exit 3 goes up, you riding down Exit 3, you know what the backups we have at Exit 5. That traffic starts backing up, where's your GPS gonna tell you to go? Straight down Purysburg Road. And there's nothing that nobody can do about it. I mean, semis, anybody, once there's a backup, you know we all do it, we all look to get off of that highway, to find an alternate way around. All them trucks coming from them warehouses and everything, it's got to go to Columbia. You think they gonna go all the way up to 26 or to 17 and go through? No, they gonna hit 321, straightest route, shortest route for them, they're independents.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Thank you.
Everybody who agrees with that? Okay. Everyone speak, who wants to speak?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Doug Butler. I live in Purysburg, had for many years. Wanted to point out something I don't believe has brought up, is time. Time in people's lives on a daily basis. The number of homes are gonna be astounding, and the traffic's gonna be astounding, and I don't think the road's prepared for that. At 100 homes, that's gonna be 200 vehicles, these gonna be two-income families, that's gonna be 200 vehicles trying to leave every day. Everybody has to report to work between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock. So that means you're gonna leave at 6:00 to 7:00. So there's a one-hour window. Just 100 homes coming out of that one development, that's 200 cars. So the, if you figure 10 seconds, and that's not what the traffic study says, it's 22.9 seconds. If you figure 10 seconds to leave that development or to access 321 wherever they're going, 10 seconds, you're looking at, for 200 vehicles, 33 minutes if one passed every 10 seconds. Well, they already say that's not feasible. You know, by the time you do five days of that, you're sitting in traffic. That, that works out to two hours and 46 minutes in five days. You go to a, a year of doing that, 52 weeks, and you're looking at 144 hours of sitting in traffic. And that's just that development. That's nothing to do with people on Church Road, Purysburg Road, Honey Hill Road, and Old Charleston Road. Lots more people, lots more vehicles. We've been there for three, four, and five generations. So I don't see how this is feasible. And then you double that number to 200 homes or 250, and then you're gonna start the roundabout, which is gonna delay things even more. So you double or triple those numbers, and then the fact that they already say it's 22.9 seconds to get out, that's double that amount right off the bat. So it doesn't seem feasible. This is, this is a company with great resources and a lot of land, and generating incredible amounts of income and revenue. And they should be able to afford, buy some land on 321 and have an access to 321 and not Church Road. I don't know who's paying for the roundabout, that's a lot of money. But if the state's paying for it, taxpayer money, maybe they could kick in and help buy some land on 321 for these individuals and solve some of this. But this is not fair to the people that have been there all their lives, 70, 80 years, some people, and then their parents, grandparents, and old ones living in that neighborhood. So.
Thank you, sir.
What's his other option?
Thank you, sir.
Quality of life issue.
Next, please. Oh, yep, sorry, sorry. I thought, all these people wanna talk? I thought, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Bennett, and I own the property on Church Road and Beachwood Drive. And I just wanted to say, before y'all make this vote tonight, I want you to vote your conscience. You know what kind of problems it's gonna cause on Church Road and the loss of life and injuries that's gonna happen because of the traffic. I just want y'all to think about that before you vote. That's all.
Thank you. There goes the hands. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Greg Paget. I live at 482 Deerfield Road in Hardyville, just outside of town. And I agree with my nephew here, who just spoke, Doug Butler. He's told me that he leaves at 5:00 in the morning so he can beat traffic around Hardyville and 278 going to Bluffton, because traffic is getting bad. And I, I don't wanna go anymore, everybody's already talked about traffic, so I'm not gonna take you long. But I'm, I'm like who just said a while ago, you folks do a great job for Hardyville, and I commend you for, for watching out for the town of Hardyville. I hope you continue to watch out for the town of Hardyville. I'm talking about these people. The future growth of Hardyville is spoiling some of the people's lives that are here. They bought that property along Purysburg Road years ago because it was serene, it was nice, it was quiet, it was property to be, to be envied out there. And the development that's proposed is gonna make that just like another neighborhood. And widening that road is gonna increase the traffic for them. It's, their property value, I would say, is probably gonna go down rather than up because of all that. And I would implore you to think about the residents that are here now, not the ones that you think might be coming in the future. Thank y'all for what you do, I really appreciate it. I appreciate y'all more than you know, but I also would appreciate if you'd listen to the citizens that are here now and not worry about the ones coming in the future.
Hands? Who else would like to speak? Okay, we're, all right. Anyone else, last chance. Okay, at this, then at this time, I'm going, public comment session is over. Thank you all for your comments. And now, at this point, we will turn it over to councils to ask any questions or do any responses that they would like to do at this time. I'm gonna start to my right with Mr. Mearsman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everybody being here tonight and speaking, your concerns. As Josh explained at the beginning, this was approved 2006 through 2009. That's, I didn't move here to the Low Country until 2013, but I moved here, like a lot of you have, because I love this area, I love the nature of the area. But, and that's what I mean when I say but, this was approved by a council that maybe they didn't have the foresight that was needed. That I can't say, but here we are today, and we have to deal with it. So here's my questions. Lamar, you might as well stand on up there, they're coming at you, buddy. First off, for everybody, I want, I said, I will support a limit on the axles when this project or when, when DOT approves. I will support an axle limit to try to eliminate the semis, if possible. Lamar, in speaking with you, DOT, the roundabout, that was their only option that they would approve?
I, I would like to defer this to Stuart, because he has had the direct communication.
Sure. Put him on spot now, too.
Appreciate your time and, and, you know, the questions. The.
Please identify yourself in public.
I'm Stuart Day. I work for a company called StanTech. We do traffic engineering work all over the state, including working for the city of Hardyville occasionally. And I, I did coordinate with SC DOT. This intersection, as, as y'all are aware, used to have a slightly different alignment at the intersection, there were modifications. Due to the angle that it came in at, we explored, could it be a signalized intersection or a roundabout intersection? There are pros and cons to both. Due to the geometry and the skew that it comes in at, at Church Road and 321, a roundabout actually requires less right-of-way takes, and DOT is supportive of a roundabout, I think, one, from a maintenance standpoint, they don't have to maintain a traffic signal, and it also provides a safer intersection from a crash standpoint.
Okay. As long as you're up there, just to be clear, according to what the traffic analysis has shown and what DOT has shown, this is a failing intersection with or without this development?
That's correct, and we assumed a growth rate, and so as it goes into the future, it gets worse and worse. And so if the, if nothing is done at the intersection, it would go to an undesirable level of service.
Okay, thank you. As long as you're there. Access, access to this has been brought up. Access off of Purysburg, or off, I'm sorry, off of Church Road must meet DOT standards because that is a state controlled road. They have standards as far as visibility and all of that.
That's correct. They've got site distance requirements, they've got driveway spacing requirements, and then they've got turn lane requirements to, to provide safe ingress and egress from the site.
This, okay, before we take this to second reading, I'd like to see those. I'd like to see those on a map of what that would look like. I can't tell by looking at this, this small view here, but I think that would be helpful for everybody. There's a lot of concern about how the, the, these vehicles are getting on and off Church Road using that access. I think it would be good for everybody to see what an entrance is gonna look like, what the standards have to be to make that happen. This, next one's for Lamar. Repair and maintenance of the 3,200 feet with all the, the construction traffic, it's gonna put some wear and tear on that road. Is there a process or something in place to keep that road in decent shape while this is all going on?
Well, I, I did want to go back and mention, and I appreciate Mr. Bennett, because he, he reminded me of something I intended to include in here earlier, where I also have a discussion, back to the point of Riverport Parkway, Purysburg Road North. Purysburg Road north is a primary component of this project. We're looking at alternative access and probably will likely, uh, utilize this. And it will be for construction of the development of a new connector road from, through where the city's business park currently exists right now, extending down to the section of Purysburg Road between CSX Crossing and nine-ninety-five to provide an alternate access.
Well, what I'm saying, though, is during construction of these homes, until they're gonna, the first two-hundred-and-fifty homes or even up to the first five-hundred, that construction traffic's gonna come along Church Road.
DOT, DOT will obviously be out there and monitoring that situation. I, they will know, they, they follow that. And if there are...
Okay, I'm gonna hold you all to that because as it, you know, if that road deteriorates, somebody's gonna have to fix it.
And, and that'll be where a discussion with DOT...
We all know how fast DOT works.
Right, between the contract, that's right.
All right. I live in a one-intrance community of now of thirty-two hundred homes. And it's not the most ideal thing, but patience and things will have, will work with it. But I share these folks' concerns. I know this property was empowered way before my time, but I do share their concerns. And if, to do this, we have to make it safe.
Sure.
We have to make it work. The two-hundred-and-fifty homes for the roundabout, I don't want you all waiting until the two-hundred-and-forty-ninth home to start the roundabout. I'd like to see something, you know, a lot before that be, be that. 'Cause what, engineering will take, what, a year?
Approximately. That's why, it would be under development by the two-fiftieth. But, you're right. It will have to, to two to three years of engagement to accomplish that.
Under, understand two to three years, but I'd like you to have this process started way before the two-fiftieth home.
Absolutely. It will be a focus of the development anyway, right?
Okay, um, this isn't for you. This is the question about the sidewalks along Church Road. I feel for you. That's a county road. That's something, it's a state road. Those things need to be taken up with, with those folks. I feel for you. But that's, that's, that's with them. You've answered most all the questions about the drainage that I, that I had about it. The, uh, emergency vehicle access, will that be put in?
Yes.
At a...
It's part of the first phase.
As, as part of the first phase, okay.
I think it's the first phase. It'll be through Beachwood.
Okay, and you said you will work with, uh, DOT, uh, the sheriff in Hardyville for, to make that road as safe as possible for your land development, your logging and those types of things there?
Right.
Okay, um, I know there's no magic plan for that, but please make it safe. A development, um, on two-seventy-eight there, they, their construction entrance, they actually widened it. They even put in, um, pads that will pull the mud off of the truck tires before they get on to two-seventy-eight. I'd like to see something like that with your development so you're not putting the mud and anything else that may be on those tires back onto the road. Your safety plan you've, you've put into place, your wetland permit. I appreciate that you voluntarily go above and beyond the water permitting for that. We don't know, you know.
Sure.
It's always a gamble. You take a chance, but, you know, if you double it, you're a little safer than meeting the minimum with it. And the last thing is, is can you change the name on those hobo wells? That just does not sound... Please look at that.
Whatever you suggest.
Please look at that.
I don't even know what it stands for.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Guzman?
Good that you're standing there. You know my, stormwater is my thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So with this stormwater thing, is this development in a special hazard flood zone?
Yes, it is. Parts of it are special flood hazard.
Okay, so in order to put shovel to the ground, do, I know you have to get a, uh, uh, no-impact certification from FEMA. Is that correct?
Well, there's a review by the city that includes review of the special flood hazard areas related to the grading. So I think y'all are empowered with that.
Okay, because I was under the impression that FEMA has to do the no-impact certification if you're in a special hazard flood zone.
No, no, we, sorry. I was just gonna say, there will be some interaction with FEMA at some point because of the fact that they're in a special flood hazard area and your ordinance requires base flood two feet above. Generally, what you'll do is you'll go back and file for a, a law or a letter of map revision.
Okay, okay. Um, any endangered species on that property?
So, yes, but not in this area. And there are stipulations and requirements related to, and I don't really wanna disclose that publicly, but yes, there, there are protections included in the four-oh-four permit for the areas. But they're not in this, so they're not in this area. There's, there's a preserved areas, you can see on some of the exhibits, but that species was never actually located or actually found to be there.
Found to be there, okay.
But the applicant vol, sorry, didn't, the applicant volunteered to preserve that area, as well as an area north.
Okay, and I agree with everything Mr. Mearsman just said. And I, I am concerned with the roundabout. Is that roundabout, once it's done at, or before the two-hundred-and-fiftieth home is built, is that correct?
It will be under construction while, before the two-fiftieth.
Excuse me, excuse me, um, please, everybody, we gave everybody the respect of listening without talking. If you have a conversation, please take it outside. You can always come back. But it's, it's distracting, uh, so please, go ahead.
Okay, um, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so with the, with the roundabout, once the roundabout goes in before that two-hundred-and-fiftieth home is constructed, will that roundabout be, continue to be used for construction traffic to be going around that roundabout?
Until such time is exit three and Purysburg Road north improvements are completed, yes.
So you're telling me logging trucks are going to take that roundabout?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer back to Mr. Day, who is the professional related to the geometry of roundabouts?
I don't think they can.
Take another whole axle, I think, too.
Yes, ma'am, the, the trucks would, until exit three is accessed, then trucks would be utilizing that roundabout. And, and it would be designed such that it would accommodate with the truck apron on the inside of the roundabout to allow for trucks to maneuver safely through the intersection.
So with all that, the, the thing that I'm concerned about, when you have a full load of logs and they're maneuvering around that roundabout and the load shifts, we've all seen what can happen with that. And, and you have the, the back end overhang as well. So I'm just concerned with the whole safety issue of these trucks going around that roundabout.
Yeah, and I, I, unfortunately, I can't speak to them, how they are going to secure their load, but it, the roundabout geometry would accommodate for the, um, dimensions of the trucks.
So it, it will be able to handle the, the axles, number of axles on that logging truck?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I, I yield, sir.
Mr. White?
Stephen Valerie, you've hit some of my concerns. I reiterate the, uh, safety issue again. Appreciate the work you've done, Lamar, and the rest of you getting some answers to the questions. And, uh, I don't, I don't have anything, anything that I would ask would be redundant. So I'm just gonna pass it on to, uh, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
I, um, met with, um, city manager last week. I kinda, um, like say from here, and I have a different perspective about some of the things. And, um, in my mind, and I'm sure some of the people in the audience, the entrance to Church Road and the end of the Church Road where the cemetery is, you know, the traffic and whatever. And I met with, um, Josh, I don't know, I think last Tuesday, whatever. And we got, and we talked about the, um, roundabout. And I think the roundabout is gonna help to a certain extent. But then I had another concern because as a property owner, this is gonna be, this, I think most of y'all know is right at that intersection. And so I was making sure, and I talked to Josh, and that that, um, roundabout is gonna be more to the left of that intersection than the right because this is gonna affect somebody's, this in this audience's property pretty bad. So anyway, Josh and I talked about that. And so that is a point, 'cause I know some of y'all are probably thinking about that, too. And then I can, I could not in my mind, and I asked Josh, now, when you get down to the cemetery, that road can't be widened. I mean, you got a cemetery on both sides. And I could not in my mind, and I asked Josh, I mean, we talked probably an hour with Josh, those trucks, why are those trucks in that area? I mean, I, you know, when the construction starts, but some people are already complaining that there are trucks there. And I'm gonna tell you one thing about Lamar. I've had a lot of dealings with this man, and he is as honest and honorable as he can be. So as far as having to deal with him, we're very fortunate. But anyway, I could not, and I still don't, to this, these trucks, why are these trucks gonna be in that area? And then we had another question, and I, you know, I live here, so I have people that stop me at the post office, or Piggly Wiggly, or whatever. And that's okay, that's why, that's, you know, that's why I'm here. And somebody else had brought up a point, and I can't remember who it was, but why, once exit three is built, theoretically, the bulk of the traffic should go that way and shouldn't be any reason for it to go to the other way. And I think to a certain extent, that's true also. But then you got that little law of probability, the least resistance is the way you're gonna go. So all these are concerns, and I just, to be, I just don't know how they're gonna be addressed. And then the last thing, and I'll hush mayor, was a gentleman talk, you know, that intersection is failing now. And then when the roundabout comes, is it still failing? Is it gonna stop it from failing? How long is it gonna stop it from failing? So all these things are in my mind. And Lamar, I don't know if you can help me with that, 'cause I know these people are thinking the exact same thing I'm thinking.
Well, I will say the, the introduction of a roundabout can occur sooner than, and Stuart may kick me in a moment, but it's my understanding, versus a traffic signal, right? It could just be justified sooner. So I think it helps accelerate those improvements, which are much needed at that intersection. I mean, to your question, long-term, nobody has a crystal ball. I mean, all of this is projections, best you can do, you know, for the duration of, of how, what that level of service will be. I mean, DOT monitors intersections. All I can say is I think they'll keep their eye on that one. They already knew, right, of the concerns through our discussions. So further improvements are needed out in the future. I think it'll just be something that DOT will have to accommodate and just continue discussions on that. I did wanna make one point, like, and, and I think is where you were going with this, 'cause we, we've taken a couple of different trips out there. And I've been through the cemetery at Purysburg. I completely understand the, the need and, or the desire not to have any trucks going through that area. Um, I don't, I mean, I'm not arguing, 'cause I don't live there full-time and see it, but I don't see where that would happen. But I think, and it may have been Ms. Butler who brought it up, and I'm not sure, 'cause I was writing some comments down as I went. But I do agree with the idea of at some point, whether the county, the city, or somebody, maybe implement a restriction on that area for a certain number of axles north of the entrance, excuse me, the entrance to development in Millstone Landing. Because I, I can see the logical question being, what happens if a truck goes up there? Well, you got Millstone Landing right there. You could turn around and come back if you leave an exit three. That's just a thought. But I think this is a conversation we can continue, that... Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah, 'cause I scratched my head looking at it, too. But, and by the way, thank you for the compliment. I really respect all of you and appreciate working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Um, I have a couple of things. I made some notes, not only based on the public comments that I've just heard, but what I heard at the last meeting. First of all, as Mr. Gruber said, what we're here tonight is not to approve if these homes can go there. We have no choice, and we're not here for that. We're not here for the if, we're here for the how. And the reason why we've taken so much time with this is because of the very reasons that we've stated here over and over again. We are concerned about the safety of the, the project and what impact it has on the safety of the surrounding areas. And that's why we've taken so long. But we're not here to approve whether or not these homes are entitled to go there. So I just want that to be clear. There's, I also wanna note that there will be no increase in any truck traffic other than construction as a result of homes. Whatever trucks happen, other than the construction while construction's going on, it will not be the result of people living in these homes. Let's face it. We're not gonna, people are not gonna be driving their semis in there and parking in their garage. Um, so I think that's important. Now, the construction traffic, that's something that we need to address. So I'm gonna go to a question, which we talked about with other developments. Because there's that one exit and what our other council members talked about, construction, we have required that there be some sort of, um, access management for big vehicles, like what was mentioned with the logging trucks, so that they don't go right onto the road and take this wide turn, and everybody has to stop. So is there a access?
Yes.
Lane so these big vehicles can enter?
Well, the question earlier, there, there is a requirement to place a shaker pad there, I think is what you're describing. So yes, that will certainly be implemented. And then whatever is allowable by DOT for safe egress onto the highway.
Right, we wanna make sure that these construction vehicles
Correct.
have a turning radius that they don't block the entire Church Road, right? Okay. Okay. I wanna put everything in perspective, because we get every month, we have the building permits. So we pretty much know the rate at which a, a housing development of this, uh, nature would be. If there's ten homes per month permitted, I'll be shocked. Take a look at some of the other things that we permitted. Right across the street from the rec center, next to Royal Live Oaks. We, we permitted, we approved that master plan before COVID. They have six occupied homes. Look at Millstone Landing across from our Public Works. There, we, that has six-hundred-and-thirty homes. We approved that seven, eight years ago, a long time, I don't know exactly. They have sixty homes in eight years occupied. These things will take time. The, um, and the, the point that I'm trying to make is, at the rate of building, the amount of construction, trucks and vehicles, somebody mentioned that are coming in on a daily basis, is not gonna be an enormous number. Not, I, I, I don't anticipate it, based on the rate of build on some of these other developments that are taking place. Not to mention the fact that it'll take eighteen months at least to get a state permit. Then there's clearing, there's a whole lot of things that will take place. And at, at even ten a, a month, a hundred-and-twenty a year, which they'll never get to that in, in, in the next... You're talking, before we get to two-hundred-and-fifty homes, we're talking years, plenty of time to get that roundabout. Now, let's talk about the roundabout. One of the things that, um, with a light, a roundabout can get done right away. As this council has, and the city, has experienced in other parts of the city, a light, for a light to go up, number one, traffic has to increase before DOT will say there's enough traffic to warrant a light. So that has to increase, they have to take counts, then it has to get approved. And as we saw at shortcut in Argent Boulevard, it's literally taking years to get it put up. So a roundabout can be an immediate solution, as opposed to a light is a maybe, taking years to get done. So at, at some point, if the roundabout is not sufficient, then my question is, we can take counts, and if it warrants it, the state can approve a light if it gets to the point that...
If it's warranted.
If it's warranted.
Yes.
And that goes to another question that came up at the last meeting and came out today about the safety and the traffic at Church and three-twenty-one. And, and Greg mentioned, rightly so, a holiday comes, everything's backed up. That's now. And what happens? That's why the state is invested. That's why the state is investing $800 million to widen I-95. That problem that exists is not because of this development. It exists because of I-95. There is a solution that the first nine miles will be fixed well prior to 250 homes being done. That's supposed to be done in the next four years. You're lucky you get 10 homes permitted in four years in this development. So I just wanna bring that up, that there's going to be a timetable here, that's not all gonna, if we approve this, if it gets passed, we're not gonna have 500 homes tomorrow morning, it's gonna take time. Let me go to the next thing. Sidewalks on Church, I think it's a great idea. That is, you have to talk to Jasper County. You have to put some of the pressure on them, because that is within Jasper County. Same with police, that is Jasper County. It has to be patrolled by Jasper County Sheriff. Just as you're coming here today, giving us input about this, you should be contacting your county council people and say, because that's a problem now. It has nothing to do with what's being built, it's a problem now. If they're drag racing, get ahold of the sheriff, and make sure they're out there and stopping it, okay? That's, that's my recommendation to you. The, I do, I agree with Lamar, that limiting, if we can limit the amount of axles on the roads, that's a good idea. However, I, I just have to remind everybody, the only thing we can do in this city is limit that, if we can do it at all, what's inside the city limits. We can't pass an ordinance and say, "Purysburg Road, no, no 18-wheelers." We can't do it, you have to go to the county council. That is not our ability to, to, to regulate. We can only regulate, if we can at all, the city roads. We cannot regulate the county and state roads. So that would be a county decision, if that's gonna happen. Someone mentioned abandoning that driveway on the Church Road. I, I don't know what the other option is.
It's the only portion of the property that, that abuts Church Road.
And also, one of the things, we're approving a, you know, this is a PDD. Ultimately, 20 years down the road, which is what we try to think about, as you can see, when Exit 3 goes in, and Purysburg Road is extended, there's gonna be other access points for this 1,900 homes. So I think that's important. Somebody asked, who pays for the roundabout? What's the answer to that?
The development fees that are collected throughout.
The development fees will pay for the roundabout. Okay, so I, I think I, I've addressed everything that I, I wrote down here. But I do have to say to everybody, and I hope you understand, we have certain legal responsibilities to approve or disapprove something, based on what the zoning is. Okay, it's, and we've taken a lot of time. We've asked a lot of questions, got a lot of concessions to address the public safety issue that you all concern. I hope that the comment that we have to have a conscience, I think we've demonstrated more than adequately, that we are very concerned about every one of you in the room, everyone who lives on Purysburg Road, everyone who lives on Church Road. At the same time, balancing our responsibilities as a council. So that's all I have to say. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, the development team. Okay. At this time, I need a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes. This is first reading of Ordinance 2025-07-24A, and I will remind council, if there are any provisos, to please include that in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve 2025-07-24A. With the proviso, prior to second reading, this council has provided, and the public has provided, with a drawing or something of how the entrance will affect Purysburg Road, such as size, line of sight.
Purysburg or Church?
I'm sorry, Church Road, Church Road.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Mearsman?
Yes.
Mayor Prottemp Guzman?
Yes.
Councilman Carroll?
No.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes for one. The second reading will be the first Thursday in August. Again, thank you, everyone, for your input. Believe me, we have taken it to heart. I hope that, I hope that you trust that. Thank you for coming. Okay. Next item is, next is a resolution of the City of Hardyville, South Carolina. Excuse me, everybody, please exit. Still have a meeting going on.
Definitely going to go to, I need to know, when is the county council meetings? When are the county council meetings? I'll find out.
Not sure when they made it.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Well done, well thought out, well thought. Okay, now that the room has emptied, let's go to resolution of the City of Hardyville, South Carolina. City Council authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement between the City of Hardyville, South Carolina, and A-PAC Atlantic, Inc., for construction of intersection improvements at the Argent Boulevard Jasper Station Shortcut Road. This is Resolution 2025-07-24B. Mr. Gruber, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's been working on improving the intersection at Argent Road and Shortcut Jasper Station for some time now. It's taken us a couple of years to acquire all of the necessary right-of-way and adjoining land to facilitate the improvements that were required by DOT to install a full-service traffic light at the intersection. A number of months ago, we had bid this project out. We did not receive any responses to that bid invitation. So we talked with DOT a little bit more, we explored some other options, and then we started making phone calls to local construction companies to drum up some support for this project. And ultimately, we were able to identify some interest. So we put that project back out with, within the last two months, and we did receive a bid from A-PAC, and that's what's before you this evening. This was initially budgeted at a cost of $5.5 million to complete the intersection improvements. The bid numbers came in slightly higher than that, so the bid that's before you this evening is for 6.6 million. In the materials that was provided to you, staff has laid out a funding plan on how we would propose to pay for the cost of these improvements, given that it is beyond the budgeted amount. Primarily using development fees from developments in and around that area are what we are proposing to use to pay the difference in the project budget. We've also shown that while we would be using additional development fees from those projects, we are not exhausting any of those sources of funds, and so they will all have some amount of funds remaining in them afterwards, and would allow us then to address other issues that may come up later down the road. I've talked to staff. I believe we would recommend that you authorize us to move forward with this contract for a couple of reasons. One, the concerns at the intersection are not going to go away. In fact, we know that they're only gonna continue to get worse over time, and so this is something that we need to move forward with and help make those improvements. And similarly with that, the cost of this project's not going to get cheaper over time either. So while we do have some concerns about the cost, we've found a way to pay for it in a manner which is not going to impact the general fund, will not impact taxpayers' rates or anything like that. So we have ability to pay for it, using the funds that were provided under that mantra of growth paying for growth. So happy to answer any questions that you've got. I do know that I've spoken with all of you at some point in time about the fact that A-PAC Atlantic is the firm that we are going to be going forward with. They are actively working on several other projects for us, and so it's our intention that if you do approve us to move forward with this this evening, we are going to sit down with them and have a comprehensive planning session before we move forward with signing this contract, to make sure that we understand the corresponding timelines, when in the improvements will we be and that we can then communicate that information to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Let's, in keeping with the order of the day, let's open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public have any comments or question whose name is not Bright? There are certain restrictions. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Bright, and I'm here representing the Ferino Company. Probably nobody in this room more concerned about what happens at this intersection than, than us. I have a couple of questions, a reason I attended tonight. First and foremost, I want to note that the Ferino Company has donated all of the land for all of the right-of-way easements for this to happen. We did that a number of years ago, and we've obviously been waiting as long as you all have been waiting to get it done. My question really was, the project will solely be funded by development agreement fees, and here's my question, and other developer contributions? Nobody has said anything to us, as contiguous property owners, about there being any other additional costs. So I have two questions. Another one, nobody's talked to us about it, if there is gonna be one. Number two, what's the timeframe, you think, Josh, that they're gonna start this? So that, that was the two reasons I'm here, is to get some kind of definition of what other developer contributions mean? Being a developer, being on that road?
You didn't tell him he has to pay 6.6 million?
That letter is forthcoming.
Oh, it's forthcoming, yeah, okay.
I just didn't want any surprises, Mayor.
It's stuck in the mail.
Mayor, if you'll indulge me, I know we don't typically do back and forth, but I believe I can address this.
Would you please answer his questions?
So, we didn't want to assume that council is gonna authorize us to move forward with the contract this evening. So this is really step one. If they approve it this evening, then we absolutely will be following back up, because there's a number of entities that are building in and around that area that I believe either through your traffic impact analysis, or development agreements, or otherwise, yeah, are, are required to contribute. So we've had very general conversations, we've just never had the specific dollar amounts, because we weren't sure what the contract value was going to be. If this gets approved tonight, that is, the next step is to reach out and get you to sign.
Call us.
Well, whoever's involved in, in contributing towards the developments, because there's a number of entities along that road.
Do you have any idea, timeframe, Josh?
If it's approved this evening, we're talking a matter of days, not weeks, to get that information out, and then probably weeks to be able to meet with A-PAC, and then ultimately work on getting a contract signed. Yeah, I would say that's realistically what the timeline is, before you start seeing the barrels and the constructions show up.
We're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Okay, let's go with, Mr. Carroll, do you have any comments or questions?
Just one question to Mr. Mayor, to Josh. You know, we talked about the other day, you're satisfied, because you said you were concerned about the schedule, and you're satisfied you've got that conflict.
Yes, sir, and, and again, that's what that coordination meeting's gonna be for, is that we are absolutely crystal clear with one another about what our expectations are, because our goal is to be able to communicate that information to the public. And so once we know from them that they have the capacity and the manpower to be able to perform on a schedule that we can both agree to, then we'll move forward with signing the contract.
Mr. White?
I would just emphasize what you just said, Josh, that's very, very important, and appreciate your follow-up and making that hard and glad.
Mrs. Guzman?
I actually have a concern about A-PAC, because they've been trying to do the intersection at Margaritaville and Hilton Head Lakes, and we were told its work was gonna start on the 23rd of last month, and all I see is orange barrels one day. Silt fences, couple of weeks later. Today I saw construction, one construction vehicle from A-PAC on the parking lot in Hilton Head Lakes. So with all of these, with all of these projects that they are taking over, are they not stretching themselves a little thin? And, and I'm just wondering, how are they going to meet the timeframe? And I, I just also wanna know, are there any performance contract contingency plans that's gonna be in there, should they get behind in these projects? Because that's my biggest concern, because, you know, you, they give you a timeframe, and then it's months later, and I don't see anything happening, so I'm concerned about that.
Yes, ma'am, no, happy to address that, and yes, that's part of the reason for why we wanna have a, a meeting with them before moving forward with the contract, is we wanna avoid those problems. The existing projects that they're working on now, their capacity has been hit a couple times, partly because of the weather that we've been having. That slows them down on completing other projects that they have going on, and so they can't move on to our project with the full crew until they wrap up the prior one. And so that is a definite concern for us. So one of the things that we're gonna look at when we do go to sign the contract is, and, and I think I've talked with a couple of you about it, we're gonna look at, at both carrots and sticks. We can look at trying to incentivize them to complete the project early, and provide additional either financial incentives, or other things that might motivate them to do that, or the stick portion of it comes in from what's called liquidated damages. And so that means, if you have not performed by a certain date that we've both agreed to, and again, we'll allow contingencies for weather and storm events, because nobody can control that, but outside of those issues, once we agree to that schedule, if they are not substantially complete by that date, we would start imposing liquidated damages. And so we'll negotiate an amount that should be sufficiently motivating to them to ensure that they are bringing the crews that they need to complete it in a timely manner.
I, I like that term sufficiently motivated. Thank you.
Mr. Mearsman?
Josh, I'd like your carrot and stick. I wanna see that, I just, sadly, we're victims of our own success here in Hardyville. We cannot get contractors, because there is so much work around the bricklay cells. How long have we been waiting for a light at Argent and 278? The state can't even get a bid on those things. So we have to work with what we have, and is this bid, to me, seem high? Yes, it does, but we have to do it, we have to pay it, it's just how it is. But don't we have some other developments that are, that hinge on this light, this intersection improvement along Shortcut Road there?
Yes, and, and actually, particularly up Jasper Station Road, there's a number of developments that cannot move forward until the work is commenced at this intersection. And so at a certain point in time, it does become our responsibility to move that forward, because the development groups that are backed, that are subject to that, don't have the ability to control it themselves. And so if we have a reasonable opportunity, we do need to kind of pursue that.
So that, well, as those come online, they will have to replenish the development fees?
Correct, and that's the developer contribution that Mr. Bright spoke to.
Because I know Ferino has a major, major investment, and it makes that area look just fantastic, and we've just approved something. and it makes that area look just fantastic, and we've just approved something across the road over there. It's going to be a very valuable and visible intersection very soon, and I think the quicker you can get that light in there, the better. That's all.
I had spoken to Josh about his carrot and stick, and I think, but we have to also recognize that any carrot, you have to go to the supermarket and purchase it, okay? So to speak. So, we have to keep that in mind. And as far as damages, that's great, but I think it all comes down to expectations. If A-PAC tells us, and they're the only ones, the only other choice is say, forget it, A-PAC, you know, then we forget about the light. We don't want that. We don't. But I think what's important is that the expectations be met. If they tell us one month, we expect it to be done in one month. If they tell us one year, we expect it done in one. So, I think, Josh, when you've had your meeting, please let the council know what the expectations are, and you know, make sure they understand if we agree, city and A-PAC, to a date, that that's what our expectations are. If they say they're going to start on Monday, I don't want to find out Sunday night that they have a delay of a month, okay? And so, I think it's reasonable to ask them to have that kind of expectation for us. And one other idea, as we were talking, that reminded me, there is an ultimate plan to have Jasper Station Road connect to East Argent Parkway. If we could accelerate that process, number one, it would take off some of the stress at that intersection and give the residents there another option to get out to 170, but not just 170. If East Argent Parkway meets its schedule to be completed by the end of the year, then that development would have access to go in either direction. So, I think, would you please find out, what is the timetable to complete the extension of Jasper Station Road to meet East Argent Parkway, to give these developments over there another access point besides Shortcut Road?
Yes, sir. I'll get into that, and I'll make sure to communicate that to council.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, at this point, I'd like a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to this resolution, which is 2025-07-24B.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by council? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution passes. We all expect to see a light next week, right? Okay. Next. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hardyville, South Carolina describing the Hilton Head Lakes West Municipal Improvement District and the improvement plan for the Hilton Head Lakes West Municipal Improvement District to be affected. The estimated cost of the improvements and the amount of such costs to be derived from assessments, bonds, and other funds, setting forth the proposed basis and rates of assessments to be imposed within the improvement district. This is Resolution 2025-07-24C. Mr. Gruber, please.
Yes, Mayor. So, this item was initially spoken to in the development agreement that was approved by this council with the Hilton Head Lakes West PDD, and it was listed as an opportunity for that development team to submit an application to the city to pursue the creation of a municipal improvement district. And so, following the adoption of that master plan, the development team did work on that application. The city has since received them. And so, what you have before you this evening is the first step in what I've characterized as a five or six-step process to ultimately outline the scope of the municipal improvement district, talk about the financing, the timing for it, and then put forth the actual documents that will authorize the borrowing and the ordinances that are associated with that. So, I think at this point, we're not necessarily prepared to go too deep into the weeds yet, because as those additional ordinances come up, we're really going to focus on the amount that's being borrowed, what the improvements are going to go towards, the timing of that, how it will be repaid, notice to property owners, and all of those things. And so, there is going to be an opportunity to do that, but right now, this really just kind of kicks that process off. So, if you move forward and approve this resolution this evening, it does not bind you to move forward and ultimately approve the municipal improvement district, it just begins the process. I know at this point, in having had several conversations with the development team, the plan is to ultimately create two assessments within this area. One is an assessment that would be exclusively borne by developers. The other is an assessment that would be attached to the individual lots that are created within these developments. And so, again, as we go forward down this process, we are going to dive deep into both of those areas. I would probably venture to guess that this becomes a workshop topic for us when we reach that point, because we're going to want to slow down and really understand the mechanics of how this works, and making sure we understand when the borrowing is going to occur, how the reimbursement process will work, and then ultimately, how the assessments will be calculated and then imposed on properties. So, hopefully, that kind of gives you a good 5,000-foot view of what we're discussing this evening, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Let's start with public comment. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Mearsman, why don't you lead us off?
As the city manager has described, this is the first step in a multi-step process. I have no questions. I'll, we'll see how this develops as we move through it.
Mrs. Guzman.
I have no questions.
Mr. White.
No questions.
Mr. Carroll.
No questions, Mayor.
I'm not going to belabor the point, but I bring it up every time these mids come. And I trust the city manager, and I see we have our bond council here. It always concerns me that the city has, is sufficiently covered. We all remember 2008. I remember it all too clearly. Slowdowns in real estate happen. I just want to make sure that, and I understand the process, but that we have sufficient coverage, that the city is not left holding the bag.
Yes.
And you'll, and I understand you, you told me the answer. Those questions and those answers will be forthcoming as the additional steps take place, so.
I figured it'd be good, let's put it on the record as far as expectations, that when we do come back to discuss the ordinance between our bond council and the development team, again, taking some time to talk about how this functionally works, who is responsible for the repayment, how that works, what would happen under scenarios that if the market did have a downturn, how that would still function, and again, highlighting the protections that are in place for the city functioning as the borrowing arm under this transaction. Would that cover what you're looking for?
Yes, I just, we, it's our obligation, this council, to make sure we're covered under any of the worst possible cases. As the old saying goes, prepare for the worst and hope for the best, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I want to make sure, and I know we have very capable councils to make sure that, and explain that when we get to the next phase. Okay, that's all I have. We've had public comment. We now need a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes. This is Resolution 2025-07-24C.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further comments by council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that has been approved, and we are now at the manager's report.
What was it? I'm sorry.
I was, I thought you were waiting until they cleared the room.
My apologies. All right, so manager's report.
Get the man a cup of coffee so he doesn't fall asleep driving home.
Two items that I wanted to bring forth this evening. The first is, 20 years ago today, the city hired our esteemed fire chief, Mr. Steve Camp. So, wanted to take an opportunity to recognize. I talked to him earlier today. Unfortunately, he was not going to be able to attend the meeting this evening, but I did let him know that we would be shouting out and recognizing him for his service to the city, and so, just wanted to draw attention to that and thank him for all the hard work that he does in leading our fire rescue services. And then, the second thing, wanted to let you know that we have formally launched a new Freedom of Information Act portal on the city's website. This will hopefully help us to streamline requests as they come in. We'll be able to automatically log them, electronically transmit them to staff, process the documents, review them, redact them, and then ultimately get them turned around and back out to the public using a system that will help to communicate along the way. So, thank you to James and his team for helping to get that in place. Prenta paid a very critical part in helping to make sure that that system was going to meet our needs, and hopefully allows us to be a little bit more efficient in how we're processing the requests that are coming to us. And that's all I have.
Okay, let's go alphabetically and start with Mr. Carroll.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long night. So, we had a great municipal conference, had some good speakers and good camaraderie time, and I want to congratulate Steve also. I was a part-time municipal judge then, and he was our IT man. And I'm going to tell you, spent many a time that computer would go down, and with my IT knowledge, poor Steve would be coming across the way to help me get going. So, Steve definitely been an asset, and I appreciate all he did. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Guzman.
Congratulations to Steve. That's a milestone, so looking for more fruitful years of service. That's about it.
Okay, Mr. Mearsman.
Again, congratulations to Chief Camp for his 20 years. MASC Municipal Association Conference last week was very educational. I came away with some good ideas and some good thoughts of how, you know, we can best move ahead. Tonight's meeting, it went as well as any meeting I think we've ever had. We engaged the public, the public engaged us. The developer, we were engaged in, and we presented all the information that is there. We've asked a few more things be answered prior to second reading, and from that, we will move on. Hardyville will keep going. That's it.
Mr. White.
I would echo the congratulations to Steve, and I attended the municipal meeting as well, and lots of good ideas. I was kind of comparing what we're doing to a lot of things I was hearing, and I felt like we're on the right track for a lot of things, and it was a good reinforcement of Harry, your leadership and what we're doing as a council, so it was good. And once more, congratulations to Steve.
Okay, real quick, because I'm sure everybody wants to stay another hour, but first of all, Chief Wells of Jasper County spoke to Sun City at First Friday and on the 11th, and he did an outstanding job talking about the hurricane events, and so I want to thank Chief Wells for doing a great job. I also attended the Coffee and Cops, and they really filled that entire Starbucks. A lot of people on coffee that morning. It was a great event, a great new event. Congratulations to the entire police department for coming up with that idea. We had our monthly joint lunch at Margaritaville with the two mayors in the county and the administrators. Those conversations continue to push forward the cooperation between county and the municipalities. I look forward to seeing the outcome of the shared services conversation, and I hope with this, with this cooperation, we do better than what I see on 278 right now. I also was at the MASC meeting. They're always informative. We had a Soloco meeting here earlier this week, and I just want to remind everybody that next week is Fill the Bus. Throughout the city, Sun City, Margaritaville, Hilton Head Lakes, there are thousands and thousands of school supplies that we supplied to all the Jasper County schools, and so if you have a couple of extra bucks in the pocket and you want to go buy some pens or notebooks, we have plenty of places to put them, so. And I want to thank all the volunteers from throughout those communities for all the efforts they put in, and of course, thanks to all the donors. Having said that, I am finished, and I will entertain. I was pretty quick. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn. Quick.
We have a motion, we have a second. Did anybody want to have the further conversation? No? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.